Committee of the Board of Supervisors back to order. It's just 1:30 PM. Let's see here, we're on we're on Action 25 Alpha. The uncollectible accounts. You gonna do this?
I am. Thank you, Mayor.
Jerry, go.
So twice a year, we bring the ambulance uncollectible counts to you for write-off. This time, it's a little higher. It's $481,747. If you take into account the amount of revenue we've gotten in, it's actually less.
Say that again, please.
The total amount of revenue versus the write-off is only like 7.9%. And last time, we wrote it off, it was 9% of total revenues. So the percentage of write-off is actually less than it has been in the past. So we're bringing in more revenue, even though the amount of the write-off is a little higher. Also, this is not our last chance to collect. The write-offs do go to national business factors. They're the hard debt collector. So we only end up getting 30% of the proceeds if they do collect. But we do get money from them. I think last year, we got about $39,000.
Isn't that the other way around? Don't they charge us 30%?
No, we get 30%.
I don't think so.
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Oh, darn it.
Yeah. Don't talk to the expert.
I actually did that math. I know. I'm sorry. So yeah, so we get 70%. Well, that's better. But they obviously don't collect very much because we only got $39,000. Last year, we wrote off about $800,000, so.
I think, though, it's the step before that that is really critical. Because if you look back in 2014, when we made the decision to go with them, and our bad debt went from, you know, 30, almost 39% down to 21%. And now it's down to, you know, in the 16, 17, 18% range.
Yes.
So it's not that final step where we've turned it over to them. It's the step before. It's the collection part that they're doing before that. You know, so the system is working really well.
It is. Whitman's doing a great job for us.
That's definitely the difference that, you know, that dumb fire chief that had it back in 2010 and 11, he didn't know what he was doing clearly, so it's gone down every year. It's good. No, Whitman is
I'd like to point out that you said that and I didn't.
Well, I wanted to say it before you said it. Because you were dancing around it. But Whitman, Whitman's performance changed things considerably, as you can see. And they do a much better job than the one we had in the past, ones we've had in the past.
Okay. Other board comments, questions? Other comment, anybody? Chief, you want to speak? Chief Slaven? No? Okay. All right. Make a motion.
I move to approve the application.
There's a motion and a second on the motion. All of you, if you signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos nay, carried. Okay. Let's go to Bravo. Okay? He's doing the cost allocation stuff.
I'm sorry, you're gonna have to hear me talk a lot today, so I do apologize. But the, next is the cost allocation plan. We hire a third-party consultant. We do this every year. And they're hired to come in and review our fiscal year '19 expenses after the audit is complete. And they allocate the general fund expenses all over the city. We provide, the general fund provides services like the DA, IT, facilities maintenance, my services, the finance department, treasures. So all of these functions, if special revenues operated as their own business, would have to have these people. So the special revenue and enterprise funds are being charged for the general fund services. That's what this whole cost allocation plan is about. And so if we look at the cost allocation plan that I gave you, the stripes up here is what was provided by the consultant. And this is fiscal year '19 audited numbers. And then we turn around and we make a few little adjustments so that we can use it for our '22 budget. So the first thing we do is we take away Public Works. They're a very large department and they have different focuses each year, depending on what's going on. So we take out the '19 and have Darren and his team do an estimate for what he expects to be working on in fiscal year '21. I said '22 before, it is fiscal year '21. So that's the first thing we do. And then that represents the rest of the city, not including Public Works. So we add 6% of that. And that is for merit increases. Obviously, merit increases are not 3% a year. They're actually 4.5% a year. But with termination savings and all that, it does work out to be about 3% a year. So to get us from '19 to '20 to '21, we do two years, and that's that 6%. There's a few little other adjustments. There's the reduced CFR plan. And that's, it's just, it's a grant plan. So Michelle provides two different plans. She provides the full cost, which is what is included at the top. And then she also includes the CFR plan, and it's grant funding. So there's just certain things taken out of there, like lobbying expenses and the board expenses and city manager expenses. So that's making a little adjustment for those. And it's only making that adjustment for the quality-of-life plan and the senior citizens. And that's because those plans are the, you know, biggest impact. And the voter-approved money, yeah. Okay, so here's Public Works's estimated allocation for fiscal year '21. So this is where we add that back. And we actually use projected '21 salaries. So we don't have to add another 6% to that. We've already, we're using those salaries. There's a little bit of fire training. And then there's the true-up estimate. This true-up estimate, we added a couple of years ago. And it just takes Public Works' estimate from fiscal year '19 and then asks, how did we do? And we've come in low every time. So unfortunately, again, the general fund is collecting more from the utilities by about $312,000. So we came in a little low.
That true-up was a good idea, after all.
Yeah, well, it is fixing, you know, issues, so it's good. Overall, the plan only increased by about $99,000 from year to year. Fund over, or year-over-year for each fund, the change is real minimal by fund. So unless you have any questions, that's all I got for you.
I do, I do have one question. It's just a technical question.
Sure.
Would it be possible to print the cost allocation plan on ledger paper in the future so that we can get all the columns for each spreadsheet on one sheet, instead of having to page through three pages for every spreadsheet? Even if we had to outsource the printing of this, it would make things a whole lot easier if we could just look into that?
I'll see what I can do.
Because right now, I mean, we're spending like, at least I am, hours flipping back and forth trying to follow three pages for every spreadsheet.
Yeah, I got mine on two pages, but the way Granicus prints out isn't always the best. So I can print it out and have them just deliver it instead of through Granicus. Well, we can look into it. I know, we can look into it, yeah. Yeah.
Can do what? Just like Parks did on the fee schedule they gave us at the Park meeting.
Says the guy that's never gonna look at another cost allocation plan.
Yes, yes. It was wonderful.
Yeah, sure, we'll do that just for you, Brad.
And then just the comment to please go through the headers and stuff and change sewer operations to
Yes, I did change it to wastewater for the presentation. That's the one I missed.
That's okay.
Everything else, I did change to wastewater.
It's not in here.
But on the public copyright, it does say sewer operations.
Chief, you under?
No. This isn't necessarily part of this, but it, this topic came up and it is related to budget. At the NACO meeting last weekend, some of the counties were talking about the transfer from, to Division of Forestry for the wildfire protection program. And I know that isn't allocated, but it is split amongst departments. Are there, what, has our allocation gone up or our bill gone up for that? Do you know what it is?
That went way down.
It went down?
Yeah, the, are you talking about the, it was like 100?
It was the wildfire protection, it was like 150,000.
Yeah. No, it went down to, I can't remember if it was like 12,000 or something like that.
Yeah, they've been getting grants, but it, so the cost.
Did you just get?
No, it's our, it was our usage. You know, we just weren't having the wildfires. But there were some other entities that went, like Elko, I think it was, went up to like a million or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I
So can you just get me a, would you mind just?
I could get you to print out how much that is.
Just maybe the last five years' worth?
Okay.
Thanks.
I think it's been that same amount. And then it was just this year that they reduced it, so, okay.
All right, everybody, public comment on the cost allocation plan? Anybody out there? I don't see anybody who really has a burning desire to get into cost allocation.
Oh, it's so exciting to me.
I know it is, I know it is, man. I looked at that cost allocation plan the other night and I thought, how does Lori read through this stuff, man?
I used to do it.
You used to do it.
I used to do it for this state, yeah.
You want a motion?
Yeah, motion's an order.
I move to accept the cost allocation plan for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2019, and for use in preparing the fiscal year 2021 Carson City budget.
There's a motion and a second by Supervisor Giomi on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos nay, carried. Okay, let's take up Charlie. This is assumptions to use in the preparation of Carson City's budget for fiscal year 2021. That's July 20th, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Okay, Sherry, we usually do this, but these are subject to change after we go through the whole budget, right?
They are, yeah. These are very, very preliminary projections based on, you know, what we have right now. And we get a bunch of information from the state. And as we move through the budget process, we refine the numbers. We also, this year for taxes, because we moved to DevNet a new system, usually I have a projected increase in assessed value from Dave by this time. And we're having issues with DevNet, so we do not have that projection. I have talked to surrounding counties and they're seeing increases. So I am at least hoping for a 1% increase, at the very, very least. So that's what I put here. I'm actually gonna project a 4% increase in revenue, though. As you know, there's the 3% cap and the 8% cap for properties. Residential is 3%, and then commercial is 8%. However, because CPI is still negative, negative 0.2, so I'm hoping next year it will be positive. But because it's still negative, we have to use 2 times CPI for last year, which was 1.81%. So commercial is capped at 3.62%.
Is it what?
3.62.
Almost the same as residential.
Yeah.
We do have a lot of new property coming on, though, which is why the 4% projection. I believe last year, we projected 4%, and we ended up with 5.5% because of new property.
Sherry, when you say that CPI is negative 0.2, you mean the 10-year rolling average?
The 10-year rolling average, yes. Yes. So with this, I am, I am gonna recommend that the property tax rates stay the same. As always, I did do a slide to go through what would happen with abatements. And Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I'll make it pretty. There, it's bigger, too. Yeah. Yeah. So I did do a slide this year on what happens with abatements. And at even 1%, any increase from 3.57 is abated. So so it really doesn't do any good to add, to increase the tax rate. Unfortunately, we just have a lot of abatement out there. I believe it's $6 million is what our, our rolling abated amount is. And since there's not a lot of public here, I'm not gonna really go through this slide because you guys, I think, understand how the, how the abatement process works. If you want me to, I will, but, okay. So this is what the general fund property tax increases have looked like. And the 4% for fiscal year '21 is going to look like. It's great, they're all increasing. There is gonna be a little increase that I'm projecting for 2020. It's just $50,000. We did pretty good at estimating 2020. So if there's no questions on property taxes, I'll move to consolidated taxes.
Sherry, just a comment you just made on the increase for 2020. The increase for 2020 is actually a little over 1.3 million, right? But the adjustment that we're making, that you're proposing right now, is for 50,000?
Yes. Over what was budgeted, yes.
Right.
Yes.
So the actual increase is a little over 1.3 million?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to be clear.
Yes, sorry. The increase from what we budgeted, yes. Okay. So consolidated taxes. So the past several years, we budgeted 4%. However, with the economic downturn, in 2020, we only projected a 2.5% increase. With five months of data, we have a little bit over 8%. If we continue this trend, it looks like it's gonna come in for C-Tax this year. However, anything can happen. This is only based on five months of data. So I would like to only project 2.5% again for '21 because we're still expecting a downturn to happen. I have heard it will not be a full-on recession. I've heard it's just gonna be a downturn for our area because of the USA Parkway activity and all of our activity in this area, so. But session will not be in. Well, it will be in in '21, but '20, yeah.
But it'll be in for '21?
It will be in for '21, yeah.
For the budget period.
Right, right. But I just don't, if we have an economic downturn, I don't know how much that's gonna bump it up. So I'm more than willing to increase it. I just, I'm trying to be cautious because
Be conservative on this. And it's always nice to know that we've outpaced 2.5%.
Well, yeah. Then we have the money. And then, once we have it, we can spend it all we want. It concerns me budgeting big numbers when we don't have them.
You didn't want to say it like that. You just want to say, once we have the money, it's in the bank.
Right.
All right.
Moving on.
All right. Always good to be cautious.
You're just using 2.5%?
So that's what I wanna do, is 2.5%, as long as you guys are good with that. I'm seeing some nods. That's good. So again, really based on preliminary numbers. But I did do the five-year, the five-year projection. And so I changed it up a little this year because we have several different categories of capital. So available for expenditure is the total. And then what we're gonna transfer to landfill and fleet replacement, what's available for extraordinary maintenance, and then the remaining capital. To the landfill. Or to the capital for landfill. To capital for landfill. Well, from the general fund to capital for landfill purchases. Right, for landfill equipment.
Revenues from the landfill.
Right. Right. Correct. And obviously, if I change up the available for expenditure, we could have higher ending fund balances or lower ending fund balances. I kept it around 9% just to, just to, yeah, keep with our goal. Oh, one thing I wanted to mention, too. It looks like in '22 or '23, we'll be paying off our medium-term C-Tax. So we would, at that point, have $740,000 of available debt service to do a big project or, or purchase more capital that needs.
Say that again, Sherry, please.
In '22, '23 fiscal year, we'll be paying off our medium-term C-Tax bonds that we got for capital. We got, did that during the recession because we didn't have any extra money for capital. So we'll have about $740,000 in available debt service. That's how much our debt service payments will drop. So we could potentially add that to do a project or, or something going forward.
What does that translate to in usable dollars if we bond?
Well, it really depends on the interest rate and the term of the bond.
I know, I know. Don't be CPA, just give me
I looked at a bunch, I looked at some comparables and it can be anywhere from like 500,000 to 10 million if you go 30 years.
That's really helpful.
I know, I'm sorry. It depends on the term of the bond.
No, you mean 5 million. Do you mean 5 to 10 million? You said 500,000.
No, I'm sorry, yeah, 5 million, 5 million to 10 million.
Okay.
Yeah. I said 500,000, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I haven't eaten.
Because we have two more corridors that, you know, need to be done, so. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And then I do a little schedule here of, of what my, what my budgetary plans are. So obviously, today is the Board Supervisor meeting where I'm doing the cost allocation and the assumptions. We're getting the budget projections out to departments on the 14th. CIP requests from departments were already due to us on the 3rd. We spend quite a bit of time going through and putting that on a big schedule and preparing for our discussion that I'm gonna have on March 11th. We are going to look at asking departments if their budgets are low. If they have a budgetary line item that is really low, we're asking them to look at potentially reducing those line items. However, having said that, I don't want to get into a situation where the departments start thinking that we're budgeting on a use-it-or-lose-it basis. I really don't want to get there because right now, we have so much savings in the general fund that we're able to afford quite a bit of capital. And I'm afraid if we get that up to that use-it-or-lose-it mentality, we will, we'll lose all those savings. So, so we're gonna see if we can get some line item reductions where, where they're not using the funds. But, but I'm being very cautious about, about that. Just so. So you know, I am looking at reductions as well as supplemental information. The budget revisions and supplemental requests will be due back from departments on March 13th. And then we'll talk about the supplemental request at the IFC meeting on the 25th. And then we're gonna have a budget open house on the 6th. I haven't announced that for sure. I mean, I'm pretty sure it's gonna be on, oh, no, I'm sorry. We moved it to the 7th because the NCAA tournament is on the 6th, apparently. And that's just, we cannot conflict with that. So it's gonna be on Tuesday, the 7th.
Had some department head input there?
Yeah.
Yeah, one year, we had half the directors on their cell phones, you know, trying to watch.
So yeah, so it's gonna be on the 7th and it'll probably be at noon and 5:30 again, like we've done in the past. On April 15th, the tentative budget is due to the Department of Taxation. And then the 16th, we'll bring the tentative budget, supplemental requests, and capital to the board to have you guys, obviously, approve all the, all the recommendations that we're gonna make. And then we'll spend the next couple of weeks adding those to the budget. And the final budget is due on June 1st. However, you know, we have to advertise on the 6th and then we have to, we'll bring all, everything back to you on May 21st for approval before the budget's due, obviously. It can be a regular meeting, yeah. It has to be the last 10 days of May. And it happens to fall when our regular meeting falls, so, yeah.
Go, go.
All right. On the budget assumptions, I'd like to propose to the board that we have a discussion about transferring 2 cents of the property tax per year for five years over to extraordinary maintenance. We've already done the nickel. One penny of property tax in 2021 dollars equates to about $138,000. So this is just one step towards trying to come up with permanent funding for the asset maintenance program. At this point, I think we have enough surpluses that we can handle those annual deficits. So this would be the same, same parameters as with the nickel, where it would be the actual dollars prior to any type of abatement, so.
So the goal is this would double over the five years, where we have $193,000 would double?
It would trip, it would, it would triple, actually, at the end of the five years, from the nickel to 15 cents. So it's 2 cents a year for five years. And I understand that we can't obligate future boards, so, but we can deliver intent. So if, if we make a proposal that we're gonna do this, future boards can certainly change that. Hopefully, they don't, if that's the direction that this board wants to go. But we need to look at ways to start funding the asset maintenance program. I think this is only one step that we need to look at. So anyway, it's up for discussion.
So along that line, we had a park and rec. We're looking at all of the fee structures because we haven't done that for over 10 years. Some of them, we haven't touched for 20 years. And one of the objectives within that one, and I think we're looking, we're not finalized with it yet, so I can't say so, but what we're looking to say is we're going to set the fee structures, but then have 10% go to the asset management line to be able to, to teach people we have to have recovery for the assets. I mean, we just have to. So you'll see that then add into this fund, too. So are you looking at, because Parks is a huge piece of maintenance and we set that one, we're thinking at 10%. So do you mean a total between? Because we'll be transferring money into this account from that. And I think Parks is at least 10% of the asset. We were, we were hoping we were gonna have Parks answer back at the meeting because I think they're the first one that's getting completely done in the asset management. Because I kinda, I like the idea of what we're trying to come up with here. But is Parks 10% of all assets? I was trying to look for a way, too, to articulate in any of our fee-based activities of what we can articulate towards the asset recovery. And so right now, just tentatively as a discussion item out here, we came up with like 10%.
And I think at the end of the day, it's gonna take multiple revenue sources. So if there's a 10% override on Parks fees that goes into this, that's great. But that's gonna be in addition to what I'm proposing. I like the idea of making these restricted funds because it makes it harder for this body in the future to defer maintenance, to kick the can down the road, which we have had a history of doing. So if we can start transferring funds and restrict them for a general purpose that we are obligated to take care of, I think that, at the end of the day, that's good business planning.
What about to the 10%? So you, so you weren't proposing the 10% in Parks, stay to Parks-related assets, then? You were saying
No, we were, but it would be in the extraordinary maintenance lines. Kinda like the rifle range.
So it would be an identified subcategory within that.
Yes, so it would transfer to the extraordinary fund, Parks.
Right, but it would stay in Parks. Okay.
Because that's how we're gonna take it from the user groups.
No, I agree. I mean, I agree, I wouldn't wanna, I mean, if we're gonna raise it there, then that's the nexus for getting that money and it, it should stay to that asset.
Well, and it's consistent with the action that we took as a board on the rifle range, where we said we were gonna put the new fees in and then we would use it for operations and maintenance of the rifle range, which, and so it, again, I can't say they approved it because we have to, it was way late, it was 9 o'clock at night, but
So to Brad's point about earmarking those funds, other than by board action, there, there is no ear, there is no way to legally earmark those, other than by board action, correct?
Right, because they're not, they're not restricted by an outside party.
Right.
It's just, you guys are, so, you're committing the funds, basically. You're committing the funds, but another board could come and uncommit them.
Could they restrict it by resolution, or is that, oh, that's committed?
Yeah, it's still committed, because the board took the action, but.
Remove a resolution.
Yeah, I mean, right, resolution's still a board action, so I was including that all.
If we bond it against the money, the bond covenant could cover us.
Right. So, are you saying, just, just so I understand, are you saying you're increasing Parks fees by 10%, and that 10% would go to capital?
We're, we're going to do more than a 10% increase, because we're setting, what we're trying to do is set everything to a recovery methodology in Parks and Rec. So, if you're the swimming pool, for instance, we might say, okay, 50% recovery, right? The general fund is going to cover 50% of the cost, but the user group will cover the other 50%. We might turn that into, it's not the real math, but like, 60%.
Okay.
And say that 10% must start being reserved for Parks capital.
Okay, yeah, that was my concern, because Parks, their fees nowhere near cover the costs, and that's how it should be, but, but, yeah.
Well, and that's what we're trying to establish, is what's the right answers, and it's the proper discussion here. So, if we said, and what I was trying to do is say, 15 cents is what percentage of our tax rate, I think we're in the right answer, again, to say, you, you got to have that 5% to 10% a year going to your asset recovery. So, I'm okay with transferring two cents a year for the next.
And I think that this goes hand in hand with the results of the reserve study, when we get that back, which will look at individual assets that the city holds and determine whether or not we should liquidate them or retain them. You know, so, I mean, all of these are just pieces of the puzzle. None of these are an answer unto themselves, but we need to start, we need to start addressing the funding mechanisms of a program that we've now been working on for upwards of three or four years. It doesn't do us any good to put four or five years' worth of work into a program, get to the end, and have no money to fund it.
Agreed.
Agreed. I agree. Okay, all right.
Well, I'm ready to weigh in myself.
Way, weigh in.
We can talk in property tax, of course, that's the action before, so David.
Get your mic, John. Get your mic.
I'm sorry, it's the whole budget, so, as you all know, what I'm going to bring up now is my favorite topic. And I've been real concerned, but I was really fascinated by the presentation by the Tahoe One fellow, talking about how they're going to fund things for long-term, inside and out. And I've also studied the situation regarding our C tax, which I'm informed motor vehicles' sales account for, like, 27% of our C tax, roughly. I don't know if that includes vehicle parts as well as motor vehicles, but at any rate, I was fascinated by the fact that he talked about how we can get it from the visitors as well as from the people who live in Tahoe. And we have a lot of people come here to buy cars. The mayor's always talked about having a nexus, and that nexus, in all our minds, has always been gas tax, to the largest extent. And the problem is, of course, the feds won't raise it, the state won't raise it, and the state will only let us have something we can take to the voters. And we just had the last of that, which is the nickel diesel, which isn't going to be bonding. So, I'm saying 27% of our C tax comes from motor vehicles. Probably, I'm guessing, half of those are bought by people outside the town, and half are bought by people inside town, might be greater or lesser. So, I'm saying, why, in a budget, when you include federal funds of upwards of $150 million annually, can we only find what we find through RTC and the gas tax? And I keep saying the same thing, which is, if we don't maintain these roads, they're going to cost twice as much in a very short period of time. So, I'm just recommending that, when we go to do the budget, we look at the C tax and say, well, if 27% of our C tax comes from sales of automobiles and vehicle parts, can we not take a portion of that and do what Brad's done with the nickel and now more that he wants to pay for deferred maintenance? Because roads are deferred maintenance, and we're not going to, we're not going to solve the problem, but we haven't touched our city streets except to put Band-Aids on them, so, end of, end of story. I hope we can consider this.
I don't think anything necessarily is precluding a, a road coming out of the 15, when we got at the end of the five years, if we can, whoo, if we can accomplish 15 cents in this fund, it would be great, but nothing's precluding 200,000 out of that a year towards a road. I mean, that's a long-term.
200,000, really?
I'm just using an example.
Yes, all right, good, good.
To get, I'm not giving you millions yet, but I'm working on it.
That's fine, but we don't have it, speaking of earmarked, earmarked in there, we haven't talked about that, so, if we can find some money, I don't care where we find it, but I just think we're being not true to the kids who aren't even born yet, if we don't tackle this.
Well, it's a zero-sum game.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, what you take out of general fund is going to take out of somebody else's pocket.
Well, that's only because we've determined where that pocket is already.
Hang on a minute, John, I, because I was going to ask you, you know, the asset management plan, I mean, just from a theory standpoint, the asset management plan applies to all assets across the board that the city has. What you're asking is, will you earmark a set amount, and we, I grant you that we've done in the past, we earmark a set amount for a single asset, which is roads. I'm not certain that's a wise thing to do down the road, because I think, you know, we're, we're going to take that money, you know, I'd like to see it in a budget, to see, you know, we can go down that road, to see if there's that kind of flexibility, because, you know, the general fund, I think, is there for general fund expenses. And if we're going to start earmarking the general fund, then we all ought to have a pick and say, let's see what our favorite thing is, and we'll earmark it out of the general fund and go down the road. I mean, then, we don't have to worry about a general fund, we'll have it an earmark fund.
I think this asset management program, too, the amount that we're going to have to save is going to be astronomical. So, earmarking things now, I think, is a little pre, I, I'd wait to see the asset manage program before I start to earmark things.
I'm not opposed to giving money to roads, I just think, I just think that, you know, we've got to be careful what we, what we're doing on the whole overall system here, in terms of, you know, how we've historically budgeted, and, yeah, how we've historically budgeted. Now, it may be that, when we see all the final numbers, you know, there's, there's some slack there, but take a look at that. But, I don't know that we ought to earmark. I mean, I, let me stop to go back up and just forget that last day, but I think if we see some, some places where we can find some surplus, then maybe we ought to do it. You know, the other thing that's, that's out there, John, is, is that, you know, we can give $200,000 to RTC out of the general fund. You have to, one, we have to look at where that $200,000 is coming from, who, whose pocket it's coming out of in, in the general fund expenses. Second, what does $200,000 do to the budget for the, for roads? I mean, we're not, according to what, you know, Brad and Loria said, we're $90 million if we're going to go fix them all at one time. We're 12, we run about $12 million a, a year in a deficit. $200,000, I guess the question is, is 200 moving, and that's, that may not be the right number. Is moving that kind of money, is that the cost benefit that we're looking for in terms of, you know, what else is being displaced? But, we could take, you know, it doesn't hurt me to look at that in the budget, the overall budget. If there's some way we could make that work, it's fine with me.
I think our bigger discussion in the road is, actually have to be more akin to what we heard this morning. I, I don't think, within our existing budget structure, we have the ability to tackle roads. What we heard this morning was an approach to say, I need $67 million a year, and here's the way I'm going to accomplish 67 million to fix the roads, because I agree with the mayor, if all I'm doing is continuing to Band-Aid, I haven't accomplished the goal of, and it may be a combination of issues that we have to look at. We've talked about, do we keep accepting the local roads in the developments? Do we start saying, if you don't have a pass-through for a general thoroughfare for the general public, you get to keep the road? Are we going to start, put on some fee per residence that says it's, what was it this morning, $7.07? I think we need an actual big picture in the road function. And I don't disagree with you, they're only going to get more expensive, but I, I just don't know that we have the actual wherewithal to accomplish 10 million or 12 million a year in road needs. I, I don't see where we have that authority right now. It may even take legislation that we need to work on to get the ability to accomplish it, because you're right, that we need it.
And I think you're, you're absolutely right, both, both of you are right, I think you've talked about it, in my view, you know, we've got to start talking about whether or not, you know, we have developers take responsibility for crack sealing or whatever, or for the entire road maintenance. I think we've got to look at that, and, you know, design a program, you know, if we want to go down that road, we design a program that's fair, and, and, you know, doesn't, doesn't favor one developer over another. But, I think it's, it's time, time to take that task on. And there may be other zoning issues. I know Supervisor Van Kowsky's talked to some of those, you know, but we need to, we need to put some of those development issues up, tee them up, and make a decision, and go down that road.
We're going to.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, I think we're at a point where we can't put that off anymore. We keep having these developments come forward, and I know it's, it's on the agenda for our, our strategic discussion.
The board retreat that's on February 27.
So, I mean, I, I know we're going to talk about it, I just, I, I think we have to talk about it and make some decisions, because it, it just, it, it, like Brad said, with, with the asset management program, everything you do, including roads, and that's an asset, is incremental, it, it has to be incremental. So, the ownership component, who, who maintains ownership, you know, using maybe some extraordinary maintenance funds for roads, but to me, I, I agree with Sheri, we don't, you know, our, it makes more sense to me to work on funding the asset management program now and not determine yet where we're going to earmark those funds for yet, because we're not done with, we're not done with the program. But, it's clear to me that, if we're going to spend those mon, those funds, as we said all along, it doesn't make sense to ignore the asset management program and spend money on roads, for instance, if the greater need is a roof for this building, for instance, because we're going to lose this asset if we don't fix the roof. So, I, I think, but, but roads may be the one. I mean, a part of a road may be the biggest asset that needs to be fixed in any given year. And I completely agree with you, we need to continue the process that Stephanie started with our new property manager and look at properties that we have that we're maintaining and stop maintaining them, and stop owning them. I mean, it, it's, you know, we shouldn't own assets that are costing us more than they're worth. It's like, you know, fixing a 25-year-old car that has, you know, no value. So, I, if we do do that, and I, I'm not against what Brad said, I would like to see how this, go back a couple of slides, how that general fund, you know, projection changes over the, whoa, that one. So, if we could come back with that, I mean, I think we can set the rate today and maybe even do what Brad said in terms of, of earmarking, or, or maybe bring it back for a discussion later, because I'd like to see how that, you know, changes as you, as you, as you dedicate that, as we pull that 2% out in the out years, you know, are we dropping our ending fund balance? Where are we pulling that 2 cents from? Where is it going to come from? So, something's got to go down, right? So, is it, is it the ending fund balance that goes down? Is it assets, is it resources that goes up?
It's the citywide capital and supplemental requests that we wouldn't have as much money for, because that's really the fallout. There is, there, I mean, extraordinary maintenance has to be spent on long-term items, so, I mean, that theoretically could be an asset that is saved.
Just click from current slides, you could take, you could take the ending fund balance.
That's what I was going to say, we could, right, we could decrease, there'd be a couple of things you can do, right?
Right.
So.
We can, but, I mean, should we go into another slowdown, where, you know, we don't, we don't have an increase year over year, the, the capital that we have now goes away.
If we hit a point where that, if we hit a point where that happens again, because I, I was a city employee, and the mayor and some of you were on this board when that happened, then, you know, that, that, that 2 cents, that goes out the window. I mean, you do what you have to do to continue essential services, so.
Absolutely.
You know, I, I don't think, yeah, I mean, that, that's what got us to this point, and, and, you know, we, we may end up there again in five, 10 years, you, you know, we may end up there again.
Well, should we be having, I mean, Brad and Loria and Sheri, should we be having this discussion now or when the actual budget comes?
Now, so that she knows how to build it. How much capital to use and how much ending fund balance to use in the budget.
I think it's now.
I think it's now.
Yeah, I think we need to do it now, and I just want to, I just want to add one thing to what I said earlier. I wasn't proposing what I talked about with the C tax as an alternative of what Brad was talking about, but roads will go to the same place they do on all of our discussions, they'll go to the bottom of the pile, and, and we won't get much out of the maintenance, which is a great program. I'm not saying this is an alternative. I'm just sort of out there to get some more discussion on the problem that I foresee, because I, you know, I'll be long gone before the problem really comes home to roost, but when it gets here, it's going to really hit people right between the eyes. So, I just think, when we sell as many cars as we do in this town, and previous boards put us to the point where we're still selling them, I, I recognize that was a wonderful thing to do, but we've also then turned around and given some of it away to make sure a new one came and other ones didn't go away, et cetera. We've done that twice during my memory, once for Compagnie and then once for the new Nissan dealership. And when that, when that money, when that money stops going away, then maybe we can earmark it for it. But, I, I re, I don't reject what the mayor's saying, his logic is just as good as any logic regarding, but how we spend our money isn't sacrosanct, but the help we're not getting is going to cost us in the long haul. The feds will never step up, the state will never give us the opportunity, probably ever again. Hopefully, they will, and hopefully, next time, our people will vote for it.
You know, one of the, one of the reasons behind my proposing this is that unrestricted funds in the general fund get a lot of eyes looking at the money. If we have the ability, knowing that we're going to have to spend this money to move it over to a restricted or committed status, then that helps us as a long-term planning tool, because then it takes the eyes off of that money.
Which is why I wanted to budget the 400,000 we're getting from the diesel tax, to, I mean, to use it for obligations, bonds, because then you're stuck with it, you got to pay for the bonds. So, it's committed. But, yes, I, I understand what you're saying, I agree with you. I, I don't like earmarking, I don't even call it that, but the truth of the matter is, every year goes by, and nothing happens on our city streets.
Sometimes, you know, sometimes I, I wonder, and I don't know if anybody on this board or anybody anywhere has got an answer to this, I mean, somewhere, this logjam has to get fixed. I mean, because we have this argument all the time, and, you know, and John's absolutely right, you know, the roads, you know, they keep going down, but somewhere, it's got, it's, it's got to break. And it just, I, I just hope that the state does something to, or the feds do something. I mean, the feds haven't raised the gas tax since the early 90s, I mean, and that goes to them, of course, but I don't know, you know, it's one of those, it's one of those things where it's an enigma that may not be solvable by this board, and I'm sorry to say that, I mean, because there are roads, but, boy, where we're going to come up with that kind of money is another question.
Sheri, under the, Brad, your, your proposal is to, to. Um, Sheri, under the, Brad, your, your proposal is to take the extraordinary maintenance fund up, correct? So, so.
Actually, it's just to increase the portion of the property tax that we're transferring into it.
Okay.
It'll go to seven cents.
Right, right, yeah, right, I get that. We're not increasing any rate. We're just moving existing rate to a dedicated site. Um, so there would be the five-cent property tax rate that's going to that account now. There's criteria that it would have to be spent on.
Yes.
Right? So, um, capital items, essentially.
Yeah, long-term capital.
Capital items.
Five-year greater.
So.
Five-year greater, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so, well, that's a definition of capital, one of the definitions. But anyway, my, my question for Brad would be, are you then suggesting that what we put in there has the same, would have the same parameters? I mean, your proposal would be that it has the same parameters.
That's correct.
Because it, it only would have those parameters if you put that requirement on it, right?
That's the intent.
Okay.
Well, this one, no, this one is a statutory fund that we established.
The fi, the five cents is.
The extraordinary maintenance fund is an NRS.
I know that.
Fund that has requirements.
I understand. If we put.
We're not putting it on, it's statutory.
I got that. But if we're putting two more cents to that fund, then that is not subject to that statutory limitation.
It is.
It is, because we're putting the money in the fund.
Even though we're putting more than.
The five cents isn't statutory. There's no statutory amount.
Anything in that fund, yeah, has to be used for, specifically for extraordinary maintenance. And that's something that doesn't usually occur sooner than every five years. Once the money goes into that fund, the board can't even decide to take it out of that fund.
Then that changes things for me.
We can stop putting money in at any time, like you said, though. There's no statutory requirement to put money in. And we can expense it one hundred percent while we left a hundred bucks.
Well, for the most part, yeah, we use what's in that. That's the first pot we go to when we're funding the cap, the CIP.
Right.
We use it on like roofs and, and long-term facilities, yeah.
Right.
There's a rainy day fund somewhere. Where's that?
Although we don't have that anymore.
We don't have that, that's our ending fund balance.
Well, we've used the ending fund balance. But isn't there a statutory name for, for a rainy day fund? Isn't there one of those?
There, there used to be. Um, however, the GASB took that away. We're not allowed to have that anymore.
So GASB, you can't do a rainy day fund?
No, I have to add it into the general fund if we do have a fund.
Yeah, you can have a fund, but.
You can, but I have to add it into the general fund. So it's still open to the unions, kind of thing.
So let me ask a, let a question, Brad. Your seven cents, now what do we get out of the nickel? It's about a hundred and how much per penny?
Every penny in twenty-twenty-one dollars is a little over a hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Right, a hundred and thirty, so it's about, almost a million dollars you're talking about, at seven cents.
It would be close, yeah.
The advisor, yeah.
Six ninety-three, one sixty-five, plus a hundred and thirty-eight times two.
Right, right. So about a million dollars, yeah. And it's coming out of the general fund.
But it is able to be spent on any facility asset.
Not once you put it in there.
Yes, it is.
Yes. No, it is, because it's an extraordinary maintenance. So any long-term asset that we have over five years.
Well, then, we're not, we're not increasing the property tax rate. So we're not increasing revenue. All we're doing is allocating it.
I understand that. You're allocating it, which is all I'm talking about doing with the C tax.
We're just protecting the money.
We're talking a million for maintenance, a million for maintenance.
Yeah, I think the difference, though, John, is the scale. Like, roads is not a fixable problem in, in our current reality. It's just not, because of the numbers. If it was a, if it was a million-dollar annual problem, we could fix it. But when we're running a deficit of twelve or thirteen million dollars a year, only on the maintenance side, not on the capital side, it's just not a fixable problem. As I, you know, I made a lot of speeches about this over the last few years.
I did too. I remember when you made them. And I was making the same ones, ninety million dollars.
Every penny of our annual budget. If we spent every penny for an entire year, we could bring our roads up to the level that we need to.
Well, it's not a matter of being able to bring them up. It's a matter of being able to salvage them at this point, and has been for a number of years. I'll shut up now, because I, I want my million, just like you want your million. I'm, I'm, I'm for your program.
So, so there isn't, there isn't a statutory way to get that money out if, regardless of what financial conditions we get into?
You still have to spend it on capital.
Yeah, I got that. But it has to be spent on any kind of capital, whether it be patrol cars or roofs.
Right, but it's also not accumulating. I mean, we're spending it.
We're spending it every year.
Yeah, for the most part, we budget the use of it.
The solution is, we're already spending it and we can make the decision, a future board can make the decision and not put more in.
Right, right.
It's not like that balance is just continuing to grow.
Right, right, it doesn't grow.
Right. It's not a sinking.
Well, why can't you just put asset management as an earmark? Leave it out, take, forget the, the, the five-cent property tax. Just earmark it here, two percent. And it doesn't go, doesn't go to the, the five-cent fund that we're talking about? It's just an earmark.
Well, we can earmark it for the same thing, but it doesn't have the same protections.
I would still have to add it to the, back to the general fund, because it's not an outside source of revenue.
Can't do that.
Yeah.
Budget law's not gonna let us. We, we need to put it in this fund.
Right, because NRS allows us to have that fund.
That's why we want to put it in the fund.
I mean, that's what the two-ten fund is. That's our capital projects fund. So we move money there every year for our capital needs. So that's kinda.
Yeah, that's this other call.
There's no creative accounting way of doing that?
Are we going back into a non-meeting meeting?
It's okay to put it in here. We spend it every year. We can accomplish it.
All right. I don't know where we are here, but I'd like to see if we could accommodate, John, but I'm trying to figure out if we can do that.
We can take on it while we're.
Well.
I, I can count you doing it after.
Well, I think I would say, we've used general fund money. We've come up with the diesel tax. We've, we've come up with all sorts of ways. The, the marijuana licensing money. I mean, we are taking incremental steps to try to help fund roads. But again, it's an insurmountable issue in our current reality. And I, I think that's important to keep in mind. So we're not talking about solutions. We're talking about incremental additions.
You, you guys, I, I'm done. I, you can write me off. I'm, I'm one guy over here. It doesn't matter. What I'm saying is that just because you have an insurmountable problem doesn't mean you don't run as fast as you can to solve as much as you can. Because you're solving the problem that you're talking about. But what will come out of it for roads will be non-sol, non-solving. And I appreciate the four hundred thousand. I appreciate the three hundred thousand several years ago. But you're right, we're, we're, we're just ignoring it because nobody will come and help us.
We're not ignoring it. As the chair of RTC, I don't think anybody sitting here has more skin in the game in trying to solve the problem. It's, it's just that it can't be solved.
I, I mean that it's not even, it's a very small amount of our overall budget.
Well, are you suggesting, John, that we take this capital amount and stick all of that into roads?
No, no.
Well, I guess I'm looking for your solution, then. What is the recommendation?
I gave my solution. He's taken seven cents out of property tax for deferred maintenance, which would include roads, but will be pretty much close to the bottom of the list. And I'm just saying, take a million dollars out of, um, the C tax and do the same thing. It won't solve the problem, you're right. But it will give us some money for other streets than the arterios and the connectors.
Well, then, just to be clear, what I'm proposing is that the tax wouldn't be seven cents. It'd be fifteen cents at the end of five years.
I understand that, too.
And, and we're not putting marijuana licensing fees in the.
The general fund item.
In the road tax. We have not done that. I just wanted to make sure, okay.
One other thing we do have is the fee for the waste management contract also that's being dedicated for roads.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the conversation kicked started again.
Was that quarterly, they were gonna pay us on that? Because I was gonna say, have we had our, our first payment?
Yeah, the franchise money comes in quarterly.
Yes.
So we should.
To be able to tell us how much, I mean, have you budgeted that in the road? I'm just saying.
So it should be in.
Yeah.
To be able to know what you're gonna be adding in the RTC budget.
Yeah, we thought it was gonna be about four hundred grand a year.
Right, that's what we estimated.
And, John, you know, not to, not to coin a phrase, but I don't want you to think the board's running over you, because we all think about the same.
Oh, I don't feel that way at all. Don't worry about that.
So we're talking about cars. So I didn't want you to think we're running a car over you.
Oh, my gosh. You're still awake, that's bad.
Okay. Did you have, your light's on? Did you, you're off?
You can turn me off.
Be quiet. All right. Supervisor Bonkowski, make a motion.
I move to direct staff to use three dollars and fifty-seven cents as the property tax rate in preparing the fiscal year 2021 Carson City budget, as well as incorporating, uh, the items from our discussion today into your planning.
There's a motion and a second. Now we're gonna have more discussions.
Yeah, because, so, what does that mean?
The two cents.
Okay, I mean, that's what, I want it, I, I. I think we should say what, I would prefer you clarify. Sorry.
All right, let me re-read the motion. I move to direct staff to use three dollars and fifty-seven cents per hundred dollars as the property tax rate in preparing the fiscal year 2021 Carson City budget, as well as incorporating a transfer of two cents net of the property tax into the extraordinary maintenance fund each year annually for the next five years.
A additional two, two cents, right? We're leaving five cents.
You agree with that, on the second? Okay, motion then amended. Second agrees to the amendment. On the motion, further discussion?
Yeah, I, I would just, I, I'm, I'm probably gonna vote no. Um, I just, I would prefer to see what things are gonna look like, um, before I made that decision. So, that's Ryan.
And don't approve it in the, in the next tentative budget round, if you don't like it.
Or I can not approve it now.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's when we get to see it.
That's why I asked if we wanted to wait until we saw the actual budget numbers. But that got poo-pooed.
Well, she needs the three fifty-seven now.
Yeah, she needs.
Well, and she needs that answer to prepare me a budget.
But I can build the, the seven cents into the extraordinary maintenance transfer. All that's gonna happen, it's gonna reduce the remaining capital for supplementals or for, um, available for capital and supplementals for the rest of the city. And it really doesn't even reduce it, it just moves it. So, yeah.
You're just putting a different name on it.
It's just putting in a different bucket, right? Extraordinary maintenance is coming out of one fund, then capital and supplemental come out of the general fund.
But we didn't provide any direction, so.
We can, on discussion, decide whether you wanna say that take half of it from ending fund balance and half of it from capital supplemental? I mean, is that what you're?
Yeah, no, I mean.
She can play with the numbers to still keep our eight-point-six ending fund balance. I mean, that's the, right? So we could say, as long as you maintain our goal of eight-point-six, take the rest out of the capital.
Yeah, we're still gonna move the, the capital that's approved here when we do the tentative budget into the two-ten fund, which is a special revenue fund. That's the capital projects fund.
If I could, the intent, the intent of my proposal was not to take it out of the ending fund balance, but to take it out of remaining for capital or supplemental, because it's still capital money.
That's where it's.
But now it's gonna restrict it, which means that other departments or whoever it is that may have their eyes on this money is no longer available.
I, I would agree to that.
All right, that's the motion, as I understand it. On a motion, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
Thank you. I will get you to answer that waste management question, too. I'll just email you.
All right. Let's, uh, take up, uh.
Hope came back in.
Got the property tax rate.
Augmentations.
Come back and hit that historical one we were on earlier.
Okay, did you, let's go to three. All right, let's throw in a rejection, we'll go back to twenty-three.
I made it.
Thank you, Mayor Hope Sullivan, planning manager. Earlier in the meeting, the question was posed that appeared the building was straddling property lines. And should this board approve the tax deferral? How would that be handled? I did meet with the assessor's office. We reviewed the records at the assessor's office. And although the building may straddle a property line, we don't know one hundred percent if it does or does not, the subject property is paying the cost for the entire building. There are cases where the assessor does, um, have partial assessments when you have buildings on more than one property. This is not one of those cases. So this was regarding one-twelve North Curry. Are there any other questions?
No, but is there any public comment out there on one-twelve North Curry? All right, so we know the answer. Somebody wanna make a motion on this one?
I got it. I move to approve the request for historical tax deferment on the entire property, excluding the modern garage for APN zero-zero-three-dish-two-one-five-dish-zero-two.
There's a motion, a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, simply by saying aye. Pose nay, carried, okay. Thank you, Hope. All right, let's take up twenty-five Delta. This is the augmentation of the budget for sixty-one million. Where'd you get that kind of money?
So, uh, augmentations, um, we, again, we do these twice a year. Uh, they're required to come before you as the board. And then they also are required to go to this Department of Taxation, once approved. Um, so, uh, before you as a resolution for the amendment, uh, we're, we just talked about the twenty-one budget. Now we're gonna back up and talk about the current year budget, nineteen-twenty. And, uh, most of this first augmentation is roll-forward of unspent funds in fiscal year nineteen that we're moving into twenty. Um, so they were approved in last year's budget and weren't spent until twenty-twenty. Um, several of these funds are probably already spent on projects. Uh, however, um, we just have not rolled forward the budget yet. Um, there is also some extra grant money you'll see as we roll through this. Um, restricted funds that we're moving from year to year. So, um, I'll talk about the general fund first. It's by far the biggest fund. Um, our ending contingency balance, um, which is the number everybody wants to know, is gonna be about two million nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand. Um, as I brought before you, before, um, our savings was about two-point-five, and there was already half a million dollars in the contingency. So that's where we're getting closer to three million. So our actual ending fund balance for fiscal year nineteen was fourteen million six-hundred thousand. When we did our twenty-twenty budget, we estimated our fund balance, um, at the beginning of this year, twenty-twenty, to be about ten million dollars. So to make those two match, we've got to add four-point-six million dollars to the twenty-twenty budget. So our ending audited budget matches our beginning, um, budget number. Part of that four-point-six million is about one-point-one million in restricted funds. Um, court assessment fees, um, park donations, animal service donations, sheriff's programs, those kind of, um, restricted money. And that's restricted by NRS or an outside party donor that we have to use for a specific purpose. So it's rolled forward year-over-year until it's spent. Um, another part of that four-point-six million is landfill. They made far more revenue than we had projected. So an extra five-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand will be transferred to capital, so they can use that on equipment. A few little adjustments we made. Um, there is an extraordinary court cases in the DA's office that's been going on for several years. Um, that balance is seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. And we're adding that to twenty-twenty because the, the case keeps continuing. Um, there were a few adjustments for state and contractual obligations. There were a few adjustments for state and contractual obligations. CPS was more than what we had budgeted by about 60,000. So that's going to be about 93,000 that we're adding to the various contracts. CPS was the biggest one, but there were other little contract adjustments. And then there was an unused internal auditor balance for 40, about 46,000 that we're moving forward, and that we had new internal auditors, so they didn't get a good jump start on the programs in 19, and they finished them basically in 20. So we're rolling forward that unused internal auditor balance as well. Or I'm hoping you'll roll that forward. We did from our, from the 500,000 contingency that we had at the beginning of the year, we did move the rifle range, the quality of life, that project that was approved, out of there, and we moved that to the quality of life. We only moved 358,000. The total approved was 432, but there's a contingency aspect that if they don't need it, we're not going to transfer it. So, so far, we've only transferred 358 of that. Something that, that I'm hoping you'll be happy about, we did reduce the energy budgets for power and heat in all of the general fund departments because of that energy efficiency project that we had. So we reduced it a little bit in prior years because of the first payment, which was like 133,000. Well, now the payment's about 256, because there's, you know, every six months we have a payment. So we were able to reduce it.
Can I ask you a question on that? Have, have we been able to audit to show that our actual utility bills have gone down sufficient enough to pay the bond, to pay the debt?
We have not had that audit. However, I was able to reduce the energy bills or the energy budgets enough, and I think we're going to be just fine, and it covers the payment.
Okay, thank you.
How long of a bond was that?
There's two bonds, one's 20 and I think one's 30.
Okay.
Because that one, yeah, there's two different, because it was a program.
I didn't think we could do a 30. It had to be for the useful life of the equipment, so 20, right?
Oh, yeah, they were both 20. You're right, they were both 20.
It's a long time on energy equipment.
Yeah, they were both 20, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It was all, the term of the bond was less than the determined useful life of the replacement equipment, the boilers, whatever.
Another thing we did reduce is there was an epic rides budget in parks, and we're paying all of that out of redevelopment, so we took the parks budget of 15,000 away. And that budget for epic rides is now in redevelopment.
Is there any more budget for epic rides? Like, this was the final year, right?
This is the final year, yes.
Going forward in...
Going forward, if we continue to do it, I think there's only a $30,000 budget. So we're in discussions about how much actual city time goes into that and if we want to continue supporting it. There is a little bit of additional revenue. We got some money for these new software costs for all the new election changes. That was only 33,000. The Public Guardian closed an outside bank account. It was only about 5,000, but that'll be a new restricted money that'll roll forward because it has to be used for the Public Guardian. And then we did have that sale of the property on Medical Parkway for 905,000. That is actually going to be, you'll see that be transferred into Stormwater for the Stormwater project.
I'm sorry, could you, could you return to the...
I'm sorry?
He has to, he didn't hear that.
Could you, no, could you return to the epic rides part? You said we're in discussions. Where does that stand?
Epic rides.
Yeah, we're just, we're just, oh, go ahead, Nancy.
I just got an email from David Peterson with CTA this morning, and he's going to request a meeting with Todd with Epic Rides. They want to start working on renewing the contract. It expires after this, after the epic rides this year, so probably June 30th.
Will that come to this board?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so that's really all I had on the general fund. If you have any questions, comments, concerns. All right, I will move on. I don't have my Vanna this year.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I've got a sick child at home.
Do we want to take a break for 10 minutes?
Sure, we can do that.
Why don't we do that so everybody gets a chance, because I've been going. We're going to be recessed for 10 minutes.
Okay. We're not.[887.61]